...of the EDC here, but it is not to be construed as a meeting. Is that correct, Ms. Rockwell?
It is, and I think the Chair, the President's going to address that.
Okay.
But I believe he's going to act as the spokesman for the group, and then I believe Mr. Manley is here to answer any questions about it, that the other members of the Board are not taking part in any way of the discussion or having any type of consideration or deliberation while they are here, and so it is not considered being an out there for it.
Usually trouble doesn't follow me like this, I promise you. But I do appreciate you having us here, Mayor, Council, Attorney, City Secretary, City Manager. We do appreciate you allowing us to come before you tonight. We have been charged by the City Council, appointed by the City Council, to help to bring new business and expand existing businesses and employment opportunities in Coleman. WindClean actually has been back in our community for, I believe, eight years now, so correct, can you say? When they came here the first time, some things got rough, they left, wasn't in the best conditions. When they came back to Coleman, they said, you know, you want to come back to Coleman? They came back, they reopened up, they didn't ask us for help, they have asked for very little along these eight years. During that time, they put close to $38 million in salaries, not owners, executives, this is employee salaries, into the community here in Coleman. And I think the Council was very well aware of the amount that they spent on utilities and items while they were at one pool of blast. What they're trying to do now is they've come to us and asked for assistance in the amount of a grant of $120,000 to transition from the wind industry to the cargo tanker trailer industry. These funds will be used for training, certification, equipment, and facility modifications. The performance contract will require WindClean to provide a minimum of 10 or more jobs within 12 months and retain these jobs for 24 months. If they do not meet the terms of the performance agreement, then there are penalties that take forth, and if you talk to that performance agreement, you've seen that, they actually have to pay that back to the EDC. Now, I want you to understand that this, to our Board, this was a very, very delicate issue. And the reason it's a delicate issue is because any time you start giving taxpayers money away to any company, we have to do a due diligence. And our due diligence, you know, we want to know what you think you're going to do, let's see what you've done in the past, let's see your balance sheets, let's see your management and everything. Well, on top of that, Mr. Manley is also a member of our Board. So we thought, well, we're going to have to really look at this with a microscope, because as a citizen who's sitting out in the audience today, or a citizen who's outside those doors, we don't want this to perceive as, oh, this is a back slap and slap you on the back, and we're just going to take care of him because he's on the Board. That's not what's going on here. We have a company that has shown commitment to the city of Coleman. We have owners who have shown commitment to being involved in Coleman. They give back to the community, not only financially, but also serving on Boards in different parts of the community. So we, this is not, they're not an unknown entity to the community. Now, I think you guys, ladies, guys is a generic term that us kind of both use, know that we're an extension of the City Council. We're not councilmen or women, but we were appointed by you guys, and we haven't taken this lightly. I think we've spent, was it five or seven hours in executive session, going over financial documents, looking at different options, looking at everything, examining everything, trying to come up with a performance agreement that would be acceptable to the Council and to the public. So we haven't taken this lightly. We've really dug deep in this. City Attorney and I spent, which you'll see on next month's consent agenda probably, the bills that we've sent back and forth, calling and talking to make sure that everything is correct on this, that we have a way to hold their feet to the fire if they don't do what they say. You know, but we truly believe in the management of this company, we truly believe in the commitment that they've made in this community, and we feel like this is just a small, a small thing. When you look, you look at their, at what they're doing, this is a very small part to get them where they need to go forward. You know, we think 10 jobs is just a minimum of what they're going to do. We think that this is going to not only provide more, more than 10 jobs, it's also going to increase the electricity uses that they've been, that they would use in the city. So it's, I hate to use the win-win thing, and wear that out in TV commercials, but it is a win-win situation with the city of Coleman. You have people who will be employed, you have utilities that will be used, and you have a company who's already got a facility here, you know, you have to pay to relocate a company, we don't have an unknown entity, we know who we're dealing with. At this time, I'm going to bring Mr. Manley up, if y'all have any questions about the actual operations, the ways we do it, I would like to, well, you can ask me any questions first, you know, then I'll, you know.
As I understand it, this is going to be a, this may be one, you know, this, usually when a tanker truck comes in, it needs to be upgraded. In most parts of the state, they have to go one place or another and transfer them for each different spot. This is going to be more of a turning key, which is one of the only in the state.
That's, that's correct. Everybody can address from here if something.
No, you come up to your senior. I'm going to come up here, you go.
The reason I'm stating this is I think everybody should know why you're doing this, and what your goal is, and how it will be.
No, that's absolutely a valid question. Let me explain the process. What we're doing is actually getting certification, there is a certification for cargo tankers inspection, which then allows us to also provide a facility to do repairs that may be a result of the inspection process. These inspections are required annually. There's also DOT inspections that apply to trailers for other things, mechanical things such as tires, brakes, and hydraulic issues. So we intend to provide that as well, and we then can perform the repairs if there's modifications that OSHA requires or DOT requires for safety concerns. We again can do the fabrication, do the coating, do the glass and paint, all in one facility. And as you correctly pointed out, there is no facility that allows them to do that. They have to go to multiple locations to achieve that. So our intent obviously is to create a one-stop shop for them, and they are highly interested in that, as you might expect. It costs a lot of money for them to move a trailer around multiple locations to get their services.
Give us an idea, what are some of the different jobs that this city tail, and kind of a ballpark bigger of the different types of deals?
The, some of the jobs that are mentioned are ones that we already have employed before, and that is painters, blasters, obviously. Additionally, fabrication, we've only done really through maintenance in the previous with wind industry. Now we're into fabrication for customers, so more welders will be required for that. We'll also need more mechan, more mechanical people, again, for the brakes and that kind of thing. So those will be new, new jobs created in that profession. The inspection process is the most important thing, and it's the most costly thing in terms of getting training and certification for. That will require that, a person that is obviously capable of not only learning that, but being able to perform those duties, and that would be at the higher end of the pay scale. I would say the range would go anywhere from probably $10 to $20 an hour, probably a represented before we get back.
Do you have, do you think you have the potential to, I mean, you've got 16 already, your, your goal is to add 10 in the first year, is, do you think that this will, I'm sure you hope they do, but...
I'll, I'm, I'm very optimistic that we are ahead of schedule on this, and that accelerated growth will be better than what is currently proposed in our agreement. As recently as today, we just completed our certification process, and we now are able to move forward to the next step and start actually bringing some trailers in. So we're literally on the front edge of that, but the response has been very, very positive. There are about six major companies that have large fleets, and then there's a lot of smaller operators that have fleets as well. We have already secured orders for small fleets and are working on a firm contract with one of the large customer parties. Again, the interest level, once, once we have been able to communicate to them what our capabilities are, it has been very positive.
Are, what are you using these monies for? Changes in the physical plant work?
There will be, obviously, again, the training and certification process is part of that. The inspection process requires new equipment that we don't have currently that has to be used, because there's different, there's different levels of inspection, one year, I believe, two-year, five-year inspection, and each one requires something different. We also will be requiring to change the, if you will, the south end of our building is, is paint and glass is right in the middle, that will remain the same. The north end of our building is dedicated to an automated glass system and metallizing process, that part will change. That's where all, will be staging inspection process and other mechanical repairs and that sort of thing. So there will be changes to the building, it will be requiring for that as well. We expect, just so you know, our estimate, and we all know what estimates can do, we're starting out saying same cost is about $270,000 to get this going, and we're obviously asking for $120,000.
And you might tell everybody else too, where's the only other places right now to get this done?
Well, right now, as I said, it's scattered. Houston would be a prominent place. There's a small shop in Longview that can do part of it, and has been part of it before. So, and there's even, there's even a company that does mobile inspections. They don't do any repairs, but they'll do the mobile inspection on site. So you see, it's a, it's a variety of entities that are out there serving the business that we're after.
This does involve the oil and gas industry?
Oh, yes.
Can you explain to us about that?
Yeah. The, the, the two types of trailers that we are first going after is oil tankers and acid tankers. Means we are not limited to those, but that's where we're starting out with for obvious reasons, and that is where the biggest interest is. In addition, we can do, obviously, what I'll term a regular trailer that doesn't, that doesn't fall under CT. Once, once we have the capabilities communicated to the market, we believe we'll be getting a lot more of those as well, because of what I just said, DOT inspections can be done and the repairs for them. Obviously, you'll have more traffic coming in, again, with truck drivers bringing these trailers in. You'll have the benefit to other businesses in the community, such as we with tire, for example, providing the types of tires. Any type of component that needs to be replaced, we can get locally for free to do so. Some components are designated that they have to be purchased at a certain, from a certain vendor, but the rest of them, we have freedom to do that. So there will be indirect benefit to the community through that.
Questions, discussions? The ones that you are training will be local?
Yes. The ones that completed training, there were four that came from here, and then there's four that are at our Kielburt location.
Any other discussions? I entertain a motion about a resolution of the City Council of the city of Coleman approving an economic development project of the Coleman EDC E, type A, Economic Development Corporation, established under provisions of Texas Development Corporation Act of Government Code, so Title C1, which will provide economic incentive to WindClean Corporation and approving amendment of the Coleman EDC E budget to provide funds for the WindClean project. I have a motion?
You're good.
I know that we approved the resolution authorizing the 4A EDC and the performance agreement between the 4A EDC and the WindClean Corporation, increasing expansion aspirations and increasing jobs in the city of Coleman, the jobs in the city of Coleman, and approve the amendment of the CED budget to provide further development for the project.
I have a motion to approve the resolution between the 4A and WindClean Corporation. Did I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion, I'm sorry, I have a motion from Council to break, and I'm sorry. I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second from Council, implore to approve the resolution of the City Council to approve the 4A Economic Development Corporation, establishing the provisions under the Economic Development Act to provide economic incentive to WindClean Corporation and approving amendment of the Coleman EDC E budget to provide funds for the WindClean project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries that the resolution number 13 dash 12 has been approved of the Economic Development Project of the Coleman EDC Type A, provide incentive to WindClean Corporation and extra jobs for the city of Coleman. I thank both of you very much. I'm looking forward to this. I know that I was very impressed when you first presented this at your 4, at the 4A meeting, because this shows the diversification of businesses. Businesses nowadays need to look at things like that and to be able to pick up the pace on something else. When WindClean was damaged by the federal government or whatever happened, that y'all had picked up the pace and had come across with something that I feel is very, very valuable to the industry, to the oil and gas fields, and because I know a little bit about code welding and the stamps that you're going to get, I'm very excited and thinking other things can happen with this. So I thank y'all very much.
Well, on behalf of my partners and employees at WindClean, I'd like to thank the Mayor and Council. We appreciate it very, very much.
Thank you very much. Discuss and entertain action regarding city employees' participation in the AirVAC system. Mr. Randy Teague will discuss this. He is an employee of AirVAC Systems, a little bit slim.
Good evening, thank you for letting me come in. I was with you about this here. I'm Randy Teague, I'm the membership manager for about 10 counties for AirVAC, like team. We are the air medical coverage helicopter out of Abilene. We pick up quite a few patients here in Coleman and take them to Dallas, Florida, Lubbock, wherever it may be that they need treatment or wherever to get to. We also provide air maintenance services for car wrecks, stroked car wrecks, multiple items on fresh scenes. I work with Coleman Fire Department as well. I'm the fire chief of Lake Coleman, volunteer to do that, and I work with AirVAC as a part of their team. The reason I'm here tonight is to kind of ask the city to purchase it, or the employees. Some of the police, fire, they do some dangerous jobs. The purpose of the membership, it takes the place of the bill, the way the membership works, whether it be an individual or a business. If somebody's flown in a helicopter, we will file the insurance, we accept what they give us, and go about our own way. If they have insurance, great. If they don't have insurance, either way, it's great. As a member, you're not going to be stuck with the bill if your insurance does not cover it. And a lot of the insurances that are there, Blue Cross Blue Shield, will not pay a typical air medical bill. As an ambulance driver, you're looking on a car wreck, you're looking anywhere from $600 to $800. On an air helicopter, you're looking anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000. They are very, very, very expensive, and there's not a whole lot of people that can afford, even 20% of what the insurance company would not pay, that they would be liable for on most insurance policies. So some other cities, as in the city of Allinger, city of Sweetwater, they've agreed to pay the $65 for the entire employee and the family, and add it to the employee as a benefit for retention purposes, to keep those employees there that the city does actually care about those employees. It's something that they can give them, it's a small price, but if them or their family is flown, it's a huge deal, because they're not really looking to come there to bill. But if they are flown, they're already going to have humongous medical bills on the other people. I don't know if the city has the, how their budget stands and everything, but it's something that a lot of other cities have addressed, and they sit, they definitely see the need for it. At the end of the day, if, if anybody is flown, they're not hit with that big bill, and any money that they would pay them to come deal, it keeps that money in the community versus them paying it to the company, or to what I was saying, for zero.
You said $65?
$65 covers the entire family, and that is the one-year cost, that's the annual cost. That's either one, one person or 15 people that live in that household.
Do you have any, do you have any cities around that are doing this with their employees?
Just now. City of Allinger just did it in October of last year, the city of Sweetwater did it just a few months ago, the Nola County is fixing to purchase it for their, all the county employees, and I'm working with the city of Abilene and the county of Tater County. We've got quite a few that are doing it already. And there's quite a few individual people within the county that have it on a personal basis. KGO has it, has it individually, and several others have it, so it's well worth it, and something I believe will be best interest.
Any questions? Any actions?
I think it's a wonderful thing to have, but with the recent increase with the health insurance, the city was hit really hard to come up with the money to pay for the additional premiums that were due this year. I think we could possibly pay this, and if the budget won't get to that point, and see if it's feasible at that time, that any money will be available.
And I have another alternative that might help the city as well. Some of the other, as in Taylor County Electric and Commission County Electric, we work with them, and they allow us to provide information to their subscribers, as in the water subscribers from the city, and they add a line item, and a subscriber can say that they will approve, they sign off with this, and they add $5 per month to the bill, they get the membership for $5 a month. A lot of the lower income people can't afford $65 a year, but $5 a month, they might really miss $5. It's a, it's an easier way to have access to it, and maybe it would be easier for the employees to get it on their own if they were allowed to do that. We do direct mail, a lot of people, they'll get the envelopes that they'll see me at an event where they see the helicopter at the hospital, they say, I'm going to do that, but they don't do it, and then they end up getting flown, and they hit that big deal. This way, all they got to do is just fill out their membership form, they can provide it to me, and I will work with the city, the record people there, how to get that information to me. Basically, we will provide all the necessary paperwork with the water bills to send to the people, and say, if you want this, check the box, you'll be continued to be billed for it until you tell us, or you tell the city otherwise. And it's $5 a month, you get the same coverage as you pay the $65 a year, and out of that $5, 50 cents of every person goes back to the city for helping with the accounting time that it takes to total that up, and then each month, the city will just send us a check minus that 50 cent from each person. So it does, it helps you with your accounting based on how many people sign up, but it gives the access to the city a little bit easier way.
So the citizens of Coleman could do this through the city?
The citizens, they would be through the water, you would attach it to the water bill if y'all so desire, it gives them another opportunity to get it, and it's kind of like education. If you know what's out there, you can afford to get it. On the other end, you're not going to be hurt so bad. So if, if the city would allow us to do that, we have experience with Taylor County Electric pull-off, as well as Commission Electric pull-off. I've talked to both the ladies that run that, and they said they'd be more than happy to explain anybody how, how they handle it. It's about an hour's worth of paperwork every month, according to both of those entities, and it's a big benefit for the place. We attend all the meetings that they have, and the people know what it's about, and how it can be used, and as in, you know, we attend any of the city meetings. We provide safety meetings to all employees to kind of know how to use it. The purpose of the membership is, of course, to alleviate some of the bills, but on the other hand, it pays for people like myself to go out and train, police departments how to deal with the helicopters, the fire departments how to deal with the helicopters, how to get the EMS crews how to load the helicopters. So it pays for a lot of things other than just the deal.
Randy, is this service just through your company, or say, if you had to be flown in for your own vacation, how do you care about it?
In the United States, there's about five companies that provide this type of membership. We are the United States' largest. There is another company that is secondary in this area, and they're a company called Native Air. If we are requested for, say, like three or more helicopters, then sometimes we call them if we're, if none of ours are available. In Coleman County, AirVAC is first call, but there is another company that has a membership similar to ours. They're both pretty, pretty close to the same. The only difference is, you know, we're, we're pretty much first call, and second and third call in Coleman County, just because of our relationship with the hospital and the department.
So it's just through AirVAC, it's just, I wanted to spark that?
Now, if we were, say, you canvassing, we had to use an AirVAC, would this cover?
Absolutely. U of D covered in 28 states. We have, we have a little 400 helicopters, as well as airplanes. State of Texas, we have 37 helicopters. In the next month, we'll have 38. We just put a brand-new base in Eastland, Texas. There's, in this area, there's helicopter Abilene, Brownwood, there will be Eastland. This also covers AirMed One, the helicopter out of San Angelo, and the helicopter in Arrowhead, Lubbock, Villanueva. There's about eight or nine different companies. On the brochure, there's a company called AirMed Care, and the reason why, what AirMed Care is, it's a conglomerate of about six or seven different companies. We purchased MedTran and AirMed One, and a company called Reach. Their names are so well-known in communities that we figured it's not a good thing to change the name, because everybody knows what that helicopter symbol looks like, and they know what they do. So that's why AirMed Care is a ownership company that basically owns all those companies, but one thing about it is your membership covers all of those companies. And we continue to open up bases all over the place. We just opened up two in Wyoming just this past month, and we expect to have another 10 bases, hopefully by the end of the year.
Any other questions?
Well, you think that would be feasible, that this could be totally good?
Well, we think that would be feasible, or that this could be really good, if we were to allow everybody a chance at it.
Oh, I, I, I think you say everybody, or, I understand correctly to say everybody within the city?
Everybody that subscribes to your water service would have the opportunity that they so desire to add five dollars to their water bill, and you would collect it. And they would have the membership, yes.
Or we can add that line on the street.
You know, I would, I would really need to check with Sharon, and talk to her about that, before I could say definitely that we can do that, provide that service. I would say that I'm also discussing with her before we could offer it to our employees, and our employees pay for the service instead. You know, I pay my membership, and I will continue to pay it, because I think it's a great way to, you know, save money if you have a catastrophic situation, where you have to have a, be on carpet to a medical act or a hospital somewhere. So, so I think it's a, it's a good program, and I, I told you that from very beginning. But I think we need to do some more checking before we can actually present ourselves to, to participate in this program, either citywide or either just for our employees, to participate. So, I think we'd prove to do that before we go any further.
Yeah, if I could, you know, just to do with the, I'd say, and see if it's feasible to do that, I can, if there's any questions, I can answer those in the next meeting. But it's, I honestly believe in, I've already seen it numerous times. Our ladies at Hendrix, you walk into the ER, and you've seen the people that's been brought in there, so it's a very, very good deal. You've never been around a helicopter, have you ever stayed at a hospital and followed around with such type of data?
You don't have to sell me. I think it's a great time.
Yes, I didn't, I didn't believe we were all selling. I appreciate you coming tonight, presenting this to us. You have a budget here that's coming up, look at that, and what we can put in on the city bill, and we will, we will be back to you.
Thank you very much, I very appreciate it.
Thank you for your services, I'd call on the helicopter.
Push hard to see if we can get it on the city bill, give everybody a shot at this, I think it'd be fair. Like you said, some people can't afford, you know, sixty-five at a popular thing in Oxford, I'd really like to see if we can push it up.
Okay.
So do we need to table this?
Yes, what do you think?
I move that we table the Air Back system presentation to more information side. And motion by Councilman Rankin that we table the Air Back discussions, situation, participation either by employees, paid for by the city, or the citizens of the city that wanted to have it deducted from the city bill. Do I have a second?
No second.
Do I have a second from the council? I need them that we table the discussion of Air Back, all the papers, say aye, aye, opposed, no. We table the discussion and consideration of the Air Back system and the plans that they have. I would like to go back to all business, Karen. We have the members that have the building standards members that have been nominated. Our board, consisting of five, will be Kyle Wood, Ann Martin, Don Dollar, Nan Moses, and Steve Altrich. Our alternates will be Liz Jones, Terry Hayden, Mark Martinez, and Chris Jameson. Do I have a motion to accept these nominees for the building standards board?
I move that we accept the nomination for the building standards board.
I have a motion from Councilman Pearl to accept the nominations as read for the building standards board and for the alternates for that board. Do I have a second?
No second.
I have a second from Mayor Proton Payne to accept the building standards board, Kyle Wood, Ann Martin, Don Dollar, Nan Moses, and Steve Altrich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And our alternates will be Liz Jones, Terry Hayden, Mark Martinez, and Chris Jameson. We will appreciate these people participating in this, I think worthwhile project for the city, and look forward to having this done. Chief Moses is one of the, well, is the supervisor of the parks, and this is what the program will come through, and the board will do their work on looking at some of the dangerous buildings in the city. Thank you all very much. And thank you, council, for checking with these people. Wanted to make sure that they were in agreement to doing this and that they would proceed with this. Okay, back to new business. The city council may consider, discuss, or take actions regarding approval of a request to consider placing the wording birthplace of Ronnie Dunn and signature of Ronnie Dunn on the city's water towers. Danny Ray is to address this. Mr. Ray, will you come forward and discuss this for us, please?
My name is Danny Ray, lived here in Coleman, born and raised here. Many of you may know that I'm putting in a Coleman County museum and the Heritage Hall. And we've got a lot of musicians, professional musicians, that have come out of the county. For instance, Dean Beard, Rick Sacks, you got Southern Cross, and myself, and my cousin Don Hornis, several other musicians that's gone on before us now that play professional music, and I want to honor them in this museum. A lot of people do. Some may know and may not know that Ronnie Dunn was born here, this is his birth home. And I heard him on an interview with King Radio one time, he said, "I want to come back to Coleman and sign my name on the water tower." So I'm going to Oklahoma in August twenty-ninth, and I will personally meet with Ronnie Dunn. He's given concerts to help the tornado victims. I will go there to help him too, and minister to the people of Shawnee, Oklahoma. He also serves under a tent. He goes to the boot tent and hangs up the food and everything to all the people. And he puts a concert on in a little town called Tuscaloosa, it's only one hundred and fifty-one people, but they come from everywhere to this amphitheater when he puts on a concert. So we, I'm in with a group. A woman called me on the phone, she's the president of his fan club, and she wants to see this thing through, to see Ronnie's dream come true. And not, not only for him, but for myself, to get him to come to Coleman and be able to sign his name on the water tower, and maybe possibly put the words, "A First Place of Ronnie Dunn." I think it'd be a big draw to Coleman, doing this, and a lot of tourists coming through here, and they see it come to the museum, which would be a lot of draw. It'd be well advertised, and we've got a lot of coverage for it, and especially when we get Ronnie here, get him down here, I mean, everybody will come from everywhere. And just personally meet him, he's a good, he's a good man, he's got a good heart, and he's, his last concert, pyramid, his last concert he did, he made a million and a half dollars, he don't want to give back. So long, he didn't give a penny, he just takes the money and gives it back to the twenty year victims. So that's the kind of guy he is. But I thought if we could get him down here, be a big draw, and hopefully, I'm going to have the museum ready to go by October for our visit to Delacaloma. And I'm working right now to get him to see if he would come down for the visit to Delacaloma, and kind of see our city, and be here for the grand opening of the museum, to get the rhythm going on with it. So I just wanted to bring this out to you, see what you think about it, and I'd like to have two copies, if you do approve it, then I'd like to have two copies, when I take it with me personally up there to him. That way, he'll have a personal copy of his own approval, and then also, he'll sign a, one of the copies, and I'll bring it back, and I'll, and I'll put it in the museum, hang it in there with his signature on it. Thank you for your time and all of this consideration.
Would you like, Mr. Mike, in case someone has questions, or Mr. Rose? Danny, what are you really asking the city to, what do you need asked?
Just to get the permission, approval to be him to do this, to give his name, sign on the water tower.
All right, do you need something in a written official letter from the mayor?
Mm-hmm. Approval on it.
Regarding this matter?
Yes.
To take what you, and you're, you're going to be going to Tuscaloosa or Shawnee, Oklahoma?
Well, I'll, I'll first go to Tuscaloosa, where he'll put on a concert, it's a free concert.
Okay, that's where you're meeting?
That's where I'll meet him.
Okay. And so you're asking for a letter from the mayor stating that the council has approved this, and that we're willing to, or we would like to have his, have him sign the water tower, and I want to have him sign a water tower with his signature.
Well, they, they go.
Do they have to take a signature and log it out? And then put down the birthplace of?
Ronnie Dunn.
On these water towers.
They did this for Toby Keith in Oklahoma, his hometown, they are a little town tomorrow in Coleman, and they went and got to find the name, and this is the home place of Toby Keith, so, you know, I thought, well, Ronnie's in here, and he wants to, and wants to come sign it, and get this signed by his, and done through. Not only that, so this, he, the mayor, I mean, the president of his fan club, I talked to her personally on the phone, he said, "Ronnie is the kind of guy that if you're doing something for him, and you hand it to him, and he's going to break down kind of like, wait, that's just kind of where he's going." He will personally cry, and he will, she has never heard him say no to anybody. He said, "If you're doing something for him, he will personally come down and find out the schedule, and his schedule, busy schedule, to come down and, you know." And I looked on his schedule, he has nothing in October, he's totally booked in October. So I figured, well, there's time to do this, you know, to get him in here in October, probably hopefully, you know, a visit to Delacaloma, and maybe have a parade for him or whatever, whatever they. He can go out and see our fair, maybe put in the judging food, who knows? He likes to do things like that. He got, I told him, I wrote him a letter, emailed him an email letter, and I told him, I said, "They have, put me and you judging." I said, "We may have the brisket contest, may have the dove cooked off, and the ice cream, and all this stuff." And he sent me a letter, and on the back, he said, "I love all of it." So he's, he could, duty council could, you know, or the chambers could put us in, you know, judging everything, he'd just get a thrill out of that. I thought it'd be a great draw to Coleman.
Well, I see this as being an expense for the city, as far as putting his name on the tower. And I see other ways to do it than right on the tower, perhaps just putting a sign that would be much easier to put up there than actually painting the signature, have a signature on the sign, but, you know, something like that, but that's, you know.
Mayor, would you like me to check with the engineer and see if I can basically pause this, or would you?
Want to discuss this, what? You know, Phil?
You know, sometimes you gotta use every incentive you have. And then you're right, people do, they, they, you know, he is very well-known, and, and people do follow people like that, and, you know, every little bit of income that comes in our way in Coleman, it gets, you know, it's trickles down. So, you know, I, I think it's a good idea, I appreciate the work you've done, I, you know, I, I think it's.
I'm looking for sponsors right now, too, if he comes, he comes, you know, a lot of businesses here will sponsor, like his motel room, he may want to wind up staying with me or my baby brother Bob, we've got a recording studio, he won't probably go out to see yet, but anyway, he'll go and see all the city of Coleman, and meet everybody, and, and if we make friends with him and everything, who knows? He'll come back probably once every year, you know, because he knows he's welcome here.
When was he born here, did he live in here?
Uh, no, I don't. I think it was in the, like, in the forties, he was born in the forties. He's a little bit older than I am, and, yeah, I think his daddy was working on a pipeline, put the pipelines through his area. Well, his wife was pregnant, she went into labor, and they went through Coleman Hospital, and Ronnie was born in Coleman Hospital.
He, he was born in the old hospital?
Yep, born in the old hospital. So he talked about it on there, and that interviewer said, "He was born in Coleman, yep, I was born in Coleman, that's why I always wanted to go down there and sign my name on the water tower."
Why you sit down so far for Coleman, on behalf of Coleman?
Well, he hasn't done, mostly his town is Oklahoma, he lives in Tulsa, and he, they had to, my parents all moved back to Oklahoma. He is for Coleman, he hasn't done anything that I know of, so he could do it. I mean, we should get him in here, you know, and all this, it'd be a draw from all the other counties trying to bring him in here, just to see, you know, leave, so. And again, he may, like I say, come in once a year, you know, go do something else. He's just that kind of person. Main thing is, if I can take this and present it to him, and he knows what I went through to get, get approval from y'all and everything, he's not going to come out and look for your word.
Do you have a motion, or want to pursue with it, pursue this, or to table it?
And about, just give me a minute, Mayor. If I have to, I'll, I'll have a fundraiser and raise some money to buy the paint, or pay it for myself, anyway, you know, to get it done, so, you know, it won't come out of the tree.
Paint's not a, it's an item, it's getting professionals to put it up on the water tower.
Yeah.
That's the.
I might even find some volunteers, maybe.
You want to find volunteers?
I'd say we just need to check on the prices, just see where we're at, and what we can afford, and then go some.
So what if we had a Ronnie Dunn's Day, and then see what he evolves or something like that, and, obviously a sign or something?
Well, I'd like to have a whole Ronnie Dunn Day.
Yeah, I mean.
And maybe that, that's just a question here. Where are you going, Danny?
Huh?
When are you going?
I'll leave in Thursday evening, August twenty-ninth. That will put us late into McAllister, we'll have a motel room in McAllister, because Tuscaloosa's a little town, they didn't have, they only have one motel. So I had to drive forty-eight miles from McAllister into, into Tuscaloosa, and to meet him, and then next day on Saturday, we'll be going to Shawnee and help the tornado victims. We'll be taking clothes and everything out, and she told me all these items, because they're living out of tents, and Ronnie's doing all he can, you know, to get Shawnee back on the street. We'll be going up there ministering, taking shoes, clothes, biking, so, wheelbarrow tires keep going, blasting, anything I can take up there will help us, that's what I'm going to do.
All right, well, we appreciate your time. About your motion? Do you need this? Probably table it to find out a little bit more on the cost of the, the water tower situation in, in, in. I have a motion from Councilman Rankin that we table this item to take into the cost of having the signature placed on the water tower. Do I hear a second?
A second.
A second from Councilman Pearl that we tabled that issue of Ronnie Dunn's signature being placed on the water tower. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried that we table the item of placing the signature of Ronnie Dunn on the city's water tower. And I thank you very much, Mr. Ray, for your work.
Thank you.
Look forward to your museum project.
They're covering it. They're coming in. I, I, not some of ours I never have heard of, but said they had fans here in Coleman back in the forties and fifties. And their children have all of their pictures and their stories and everything. So I want to honor every musician that's ever come out of here. We've had a lot of people, people don't realize the talent that's come out of here. And, uh...
This will help us to realize that. Well, thank you very much for coming today. The next item under new business is that the council may consider discussing or take action regarding an appointment of a new board member to the senior citizens board. And Rankin is here to discuss that for us? No, I know. She's, uh, actually, she's here just, uh, to answer our questions perhaps. The senior citizens board is, uh, meeting a, uh, an appointment from the city. It does not have to be a city employee, correct? And, uh, the county has someone that they appoint and the city, city will, needs to appoint someone. Of course, I also want to thank Nina and her crew for all that they have done this week. It's been awful hard on them and... She's had, she's had city crews to help her and volunteers and all and, and I saw one of our citizens on the TV last night. That was good. Anyway, uh, do I have a nomination for?
I have a reference, as you can.
Recommendation, okay.
Reference Brad Slaton.
Brad Slaton? Any other nominations? Have a, would you like to put that in the form of a motion to, like, Brad Slaton as the?
I'll make a motion to appoint Referent Brad Slaton to the board of the senior citizens.
I have a motion from Councilman, uh, Needham. This is getting long. Uh, uh, from Councilman Needham that we appoint Brad Slaton as the new member for the senior citizens board. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second from Councilman Pearl that we appoint, uh, Brad Slaton as the new board member of the senior citizens center. All in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Brad Slaton will be the, be appointed to the senior center. Would you, Johnny, would you like to contact, would, do you want to contact him or do you?
I can.
You can? Okay. Will that be okay with you, Tim?
That would be fine.
All right. Thank you very much.